We're all set to go?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll read one.
This is the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
The adjustments to the agenda.
I do, Mr. Chair, I have a RSU 21 update and a planning board update.
And yes, Mr. Chair, I have two more subject matters I want to take up on the manager's report reference to the reuse room in Hazmat Day.
Motion we approve as amended.
Second. All favor. Public forum will then want to address the board with respect to an item that's not already on the agenda. Prove of the amendments of July 26.
Motion we approve is submitted. Second.
All in favor then? All right, Dan, any board reports?
Okay, I'll start with the Monday, August 2nd RSU 21 school board meeting. See, so there was a nomination and approval of the following. Danielle Russell, mathematics teacher, MSK, salary of $51,148. Amanda Wilson, grade three teacher, SRS, salary of $59,839. Elizabeth Thompson, grade four teacher, SRS, salary of $44,735. Taylor Pearson, social studies teacher at MSK, salary of $49,462. Sarah Sukafert, elementary music band teacher at KCS, salary of $47,345. James Maloney Hawkins, science teacher, MSK, salary of $51,148. Allison Abbott, grade K and one teacher, KCS, salary of $62,759. Sean Dougherty, mathematics teacher at the high school, salary of $64,744. And Crystal Saint Orange, mathematics teacher at the high school, salary of $74,216. Resignation of Renee Doucette, English teacher at the high school, and resignation of Jennifer Cluver, elementary Spanish teacher at KES. Superintendent's report, she gave an update on the upcoming school sessions. She really emphasized five days a week. She heard it, you know, last year, and she's doing everything that she can to make sure that we have five days a week. And that means masks for all, all kids, all students, all faculty will be required to wear masks. They're working on some enhanced cleaning, and they'll do whatever they can for social distancing whenever possible. We're still looking at trying different ways to make sure that they do as much social distancing as possible. Dr. Burgess discussed the COVID issue. He talked about the Delta variants and how 20% of the cases are in children. And then the majority of the cases are folks that have not been vaccinated. He's confident that if we do all of the steps that the superintendent wants to do, you know, the mask, the social distancing, that there will be a very low transmission rate. When it comes to sports, obviously, you know, it's pretty hard to wear masks on sports. But what they will do with sports is if you're on the sidelines, you'll be required to wear a mask. Director of Operations gave an update on the bus drivers. He talked about the shower project at the high school. There are seven showers that are being installed. Those will be completed by mid-August. Kudos out to the facilities and maintenance group that have done a ton of work, Ana Custodians that have done a ton of work this summer to get everything ready. The superintendent updated on the summer school program. It looks like it's been a success. She feels that it's been a success, but they're in the middle of doing some testing to gather the success rate and to, you know, look at further improvements. She's having admin meetings weekly to talk about best practices, guidelines, keeping everybody informed, complete transparency and clarity on the direction of where they're going. August 26 is kickstart, and school board members are invited to attend that. When the superintendent's report was done, the board made a motion to accept Dr. Cooper's recommendations for the new school year, you know, the masking and all of that stuff. One of the student liaison, Mary Hauser, asked about if they could keep some sort of a hybrid for students that may be out for COVID issue. And the superintendent stated that she would take that into consideration. Let's see, they approved. Yeah, they approved one, one. Where is it? So they approved, they had the second reading of the Board of Directors that was approved. And at that point, it was a little bit after 9:30, so they decided to, all updates from the board chair and all that stuff, they decided to postpone that to the next meeting. We adjourned at 9:34 PM. Questions? Okay. Okay, planning board meeting, August 3rd. Public hearing, conditional use permit amendment for specialty design stables. That's an amendment to amend the conditional use permit to include the addition of a 14,400 square foot indoor meeting area. A few comments from some of others, nothing major, just, you know, some clarification stuff. Pending applications, conditional use permit for the stables, that got approved. New application was Oak Ridge Terrace Phase 2. That's a subdivision proposal to construct a 560 linear foot cul-de-sac road through Phase 2 with the addition of six new houses. That's a Walter Woods that owns that. Again, a few comments, nothing really major on that. Walter Woods bought, I guess, he owns Laurel Lane now. It's no longer a private road through that association, but it's a private road, but he owns it. And there was some discussion on how he had the road repaved, and there's some scalloping in the road, so he's going to have that all repaved. His plan is in a couple of years after he goes through the process to petition that for a town road. Let's see, conditional use permit for the Holy Donut. We've got a Holy Donut coming to the town of Arundel. That's going to be over at the old seafood place. And it's going to be a drive-through, and then they're also going to have a manufacturing facility that's pretty much going to take care of all of their places. They're going to do all of the manufacturing there. Their plan is to employ about 22 people. So it's looking pretty good. They're having a site walk on that on August, Monday, August 16th. Planner's report, he did talk a little bit about, he really didn't have much, but he talked a little bit about how things have been working with Jim and Ann. You know, there's been a few things here and there that were missed. You know, Ann's been doing a whole lot of new things that she's never done before. But all in all, he's very happy with how it's working. He said things, you know, working with Jim and Ann have been pretty awesome. Very pleased with how that's working. And we adjourned at 8:58.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Anybody have any questions of Dan or comments? No, we'll move on to the manager's report then, beginning with snow plowing.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. We've been, as you know, you'd asked me at the last meeting to work on putting together a request for proposal. This is probably the second or third rendition that I've been working on. And through the process, I've also been speaking with both Terry and Roger as to the, eventually, to whether or not we're going to have to actually do the proposals. Things have been very fluid for us, and Roger's been able to get a couple more applications that come in. We've also had one of our full-time employees just recently pass his CDL license. So all of our staff right now are CDL qualified, which is a benefit for our, for us. And so we're into that, and that's why I asked Roger and Terry to come tonight, because we're in that position that we may be successful enough with some of our own personnel and some of the people that we may hire that we can avoid hiring a outside contractor to do a portion of the town. So Terry and Roger here, they can sort of fill in the details, and then we can decide whether you want me to move forward with what we have here tonight or sort of wait and see how this thing's going to flush out for us, because it's a little bit better than we thought it was two weeks ago, so.
You've got the floor, Roger.
You can come on up, sit at the table, so we can see you, Roger.
Need to speak in the mic. Well, no, we can, but. Dynamic duo.
Is that mic turned on?
The mic is on, yeah.
Off or on?
It's on.
I'm kind of torn either way with this. I know talking to the RSU is not going to be a fun thing. Just wondering if we can't plow roads. And I'm going to appreciate the fact that we can't do what we always does. It wouldn't be a bad idea just to see what catastrophe really is. I saw a copy of Wyman's contract, quite frankly. I think the Rundles might get a hell of a deal for a long time. It's $360,000 this year. That's over half of our current budget. Keith has changed this a little bit so that it now reads 11.7 miles of road. That is basically one of our upper routes, which would encompass Hill Road, Trump Brook Road, the upper end of Limerick Road, we know it as route number two. Says Mountain Road to Limerick Road, Limerick to Alfred Road, Alfred Road to Hill Road, into Wyman, turn around, through Trump Brook, Thompson, Curtis, and then Irving Road back into the Gulf Coast. So it's that upper loop. To me, that would be the only one that would make sense to put out. It kind of overlaps with somebody right next door who's already on the Hill Road. And quite frankly, I think you're only going to get, I'd be surprised if we get more than one better. More than likely, it would be Alphorim, which is taking snow fighters. I'm not opposed to seeing this go to bid to that. You can hold it in reserve. Personally, I don't think we're going to need to do that. I had five applications yesterday. Only one which I told them all they were on.
For full-time employment. But even though.
I don't get many. I mean, we hadn't got any for a long time, now all of a sudden.
But I mean, we could still put this out. Just if we put it out, doesn't mean we have to approve it. But that gives us time for you to see if you can, if your hires happen. And I think, you know, the roads should be listed on this contract here, or whatever we're asking for, for proposal.
You can just refer to it as two, that's all. Give us a copy of it.
You know, I guess my put is, why wouldn't we want to try this anyways? Even if, even if he has, you know, I guess it depends on how much it is. But, you know, I think we're financially in a position that we might be able to afford it, even if you get your, you know, your extra help. But, you know, that's kind of what I'm thinking, but.
I think you're going to have some stickish here.
What's that?
I think you're going to have some stickish up.
Could be, yeah.
That number from Wyman, Roger, is that all of Wyman?
That is all of Wyman.
How many miles of road is that?
It's just about the same as the Rundles. Well, within a few miles, one way or the other. Physical size, they might be a little bigger. Road miles is close, so I don't know about their developments, whether they've got more than we do or less. That feeling is they might have less, but I don't know that.
Do you save any money if we award a contract to somebody else?
I don't see how. I think it's.
I don't think so either.
Yeah, if you cut down, you cut their contract in half, we're looking at probably a little over $180,000 to plow 11.7 miles of road. The way I massaged the RFP too was that they would, they would work exclusively through the public works department. They would be called out by Roger. They wouldn't be as independent as perhaps they are in other communities. We would also supply all their salt and sand, so they would have to actually physically come in contact with us so we can always keep that communication open, so. And I think I concur with what Roger's assessment is. I don't think we're going to get many proposals. It's a unique skill set that we're asking for. I think years ago, there were a lot of people doing it, but I think now there isn't as many. So I think we'll be limited to the amount we, folks we do get.
Keith, you said 100,000. What's that, what is that? What? You mentioned $100,000. What is that? Is that what we estimate is for us to do those roads, or?
No, what I'm saying is that right now, the Dayton Snowfighter's due all of Wyman. Their contract is $360,000 for a little over 22, 23 miles of road. So if I cut it in half, you know. Right, conservatively, that's what I'm projecting. It may be less, it may be more, I'm not quite sure, because I don't know the fine details of all of what they supply, if they have to add in the salt and the sand and all that kind of stuff as well, so. That's just a conservative estimate. So what I'm hearing is that you want us to maybe go forward and put this out. Roger's still assessing some of these, these applications we're getting in. We had another one, I think we've often have a condition of employment. We're just waiting for his notice to be up with his present employer. And so we'll have another full-timer on, but we still got a couple of spots that are still open, so. It's looking better.
That would still leave one full-time driver labor position open, and one, the one that really hurts is mechanic.
Fleet mechanic, yep.
Right now, we have.
Yeah. Double duos here. They're doing fleet work, so. All right, so what I'm hearing is that you want us to go ahead and just continue with this, so I'll.
That was just me, I don't know about.
I'm looking at the heads nodding, so.
I got to come up quick. Why only 65% of the performance spots, 65% of the proposed contracts?
Why? Only, the only reason to stay is because I took it out of another contract. So if we want to go 100%, we go 100%.
I think we want to cover ourselves.
Yeah. Yep.
And I don't think $400,000 in insurance is enough.
400. You don't think 400's enough, personal injury?
I don't think so.
Okay.
I think you need at least 500, if not a million.
All right, I'll double check with MMA again to see where we are. Okay.
One of the things I have a little out there about this, is you always seem to lose a little bit of control when you're having somebody else give you work. And in a perfect world, it should work, but depending on who he has for driver, and he knocks down everything in sight, my phone's going to be ringing a lot. So little things like that. But again, I think we've got to do it just to test the waters and see what's out there. I'm guessing you're going to pay $6,000 a mile, bare minimum, plus material.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
That's 70 grand right there, just on those numbers, for the mileage.
I get that we lose some control, but, you know, obviously, I think we have to make sure that we get all the roads plowed and. I think, yeah, it depends on what it comes in at, but, you know, I think it's something that we should, you know, we should give it a shot, because I think it would help, help you guys out tremendously, especially if you're short on, you know, on drivers and.
It's all about the fact of these guys coming in, if they're any good, you know, we can hire them. Recognize any of the names of all of them?
One of them is a repeat from before, and the CDL license thing is kind of funny, because there's actually a license, a B, and there's actually a C, CDL, depending on what you do. And this guy, one of them has a commercial driver's license, but it's only a C, doesn't do anything good. So he was stressed to the point that he has a CDL license, but unfortunately.
Not the right one.
Doesn't cover what we need.
Roger, early on, you mentioned something about the RSU. What was your comment? I missed that.
My comment was the fact that the RSU's not going to be real happy if we can't plow our roads, because they're going to have a lot of school days off.
Oh.
So we have had storms last year, and I told him, I can't tell you the exact language I used, but there was only going to be two fools there some night, and it happened. We had a snowstorm, some of the guys were away, for whatever reason, the two trucks went out that night. He was driving one, and I was driving the other. That's not a fun time.
Yeah.
But we've got a few other guys. One of the, one of the guys did pass his license the other day. We've got another guy that has been through the interview process. We're waiting for him to clear his physical and everything. But he is one of the more motivated guys that I've talked to since we've had crews. He seems to be a go-getter, whether he lays down when he gets here or not, but I don't think so. He seems motivated. I talked to another guy tonight that right now is working for the DOT. His spot's not before, he's got brushes, done everything we do. Sometimes those are the ones we look at real close, and sometimes they go in different file, other times no. Feels like a box of chocolates.
You just keep running and running.
Okay, so we're going to test the waters.
Okay, we'll test the waters.
Not to double down at all, but is there such a thing as like hiring out mechanics today? Is there like mobile mechanics that we could look at?
I have actually talked, Kenny Bogwood's mechanic, is going to do a little moonlight for us this week. He's off on Fridays, he's been a complimentary worker on one of our trucks. Going to pay him as a subcontractor. So for some of the stuff, we just don't have the tools for, to do some of these things. So this guy more than what we did that. I don't know, it just don't seem to be a lot of the taxes there.
And if you do have an applicant, they don't have the diesel experience, you know? They have just regular, like dealership, like Mack Molders or something like that. They don't have the diesel experience that we need.
I've seen trucks on the road, like caterpillar on the side of the trucks. So I didn't know if there were services on there that did that.
Depending on what you've got for an issue, I mean, a lot of those guys have road guys that can come out for certain stuff, but.
Yeah, what just is like Southwood, Hilton, Chadwick, all those guys.
So I hate to see you guys getting into snowplows, that's probably when most of your stuff breaks down, right?
Well, everything that we have gets serviced in the fall prior to snow. By the time stuff gets done in the spring, just to keep stuff a little separate so that we can absolutely be ready for the snow. That's, that's a key piece, that's what I got.
Knock on wood, even last year, I don't think we had many breakdowns, serious breakdowns. And then with our upgrade of our fleet, that's helped us a lot too.
Right.
But still, that doesn't, you know, sander chain or something like that in the middle of a storm would be an issue.
I'll have to please the military surplus, we've got a couple of backups, so. We plowed half of last season because we had a major problem with one or the other. Two trucks, it's only 24 years old, and that was down for three weeks or something like that. So we do have backups, but it's with somebody in the scene that we need the most. Hopefully, we can do that.
Thank you, gentlemen.
See you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Just to give you a quick update on the GIS setup and the mapping. I spoke with Aaron Weston from CAI Technologies last week, and then also with Beth. And our plan is, right, our plan is to, once fall gets here, is to begin in earnest to upgrade our, update our mapping. I'm asking CIA to come in and sit down with us, probably after the tax rate has been set, to lay out a plan of action to get our maps up to date. Right now, our maps are 2017, and the only upgraded map that has everything on it is the one that is in Beth's office. She has a master map of when the deeds come in, and they've been recorded, and she gets copies of them, she places them literally on her map. Now, CAI Technology is telling me that as long as they have the deeds, they can take the copies of the deeds with our maps and update our maps based on what the deed descriptions read. So still a little bit of conversation to happen, but my goal is to get our maps up to date. And then at that point, begin the other process of what CIA can provide to us, which will be the layering of the maps. So not only will we have updated maps, eventually we'll have the layering of the zonings, zoning that will go on the mapping, whatever business zone or residential zone they're in, whatever shoreline zoning protection, whatever setbacks are required within the, within that area will be, also be able to layered on the maps. And then if there's public water or anything to those extents, though we don't have a lot of it in town, we do have it on the Route 1 corridor, that will be identified. So folks can then reference our, go on the website and reference this material and have the ability to see it without really coming in. So that's the ultimate goal here, but right now, we've got to focus on those mapping. And so that's where we're going to set our focus here coming up in the early fall. Again, I did quite speak to Beth. Right now, we're shooting for your next business meeting to set the tax rate, so, which will be the 23rd. So as soon as I have the data in my hands, I'll get it out to you, hopefully, prior to your getting your packets. So at least you'll have that information and some recommendations from us as to where we think we're going to be proposing for a tax rate. So you can take a look at all of that. The RFPs for landscaping have gone out. I've received one inquiry at this point. They're not due back until, I think, the 19th of August. And then we'll open them or have discussion with them at a meeting on the 23rd. So based on what I received, I'm getting a weekly, the proposal. So, um, based on what I received, um, I'm getting a weekly, the, the proposal was a weekly cost of 300 a week, which would put it in, i- if you know, if you're looking at six, six months, which include the mowing, uh, weed whacking, um, shrub, uh, shrubbery, um, um, maintenance as well as mulching. Uh, that's all included in the package, but if you break it down, it's like 300 a week. So it'd be about 7,200. And if we go to the, the high end of, you know, like 24 weeks, which that may be a little high. Um, so I'm just trying to figure out the numbers right now. So, um, I'm not sure if that 300 is a good number. It's the first time I've ever done it. So we'll have to wait and see. Hopefully we get other folks that'll come in with, with some costs associated with us.
I got a, I got a phone.
Sure.
So when are, so we still have some dead trees out here that haven't been replaced and
Yep.
You know, we've had a wet summer. Probably would have been a good opportunity to get these things done now while the weather was wet. Uh, what, what's going on with those?
I certainly got ahold of, uh, of Luke and identified the ones that were needed to be replaced. He indicated he was gonna contact the contractor who placed them in, come down, take a look and do what they had to do. So I'll follow up obviously with Luke, but I've got some rhododendrons that are bad. Um, we've got some shrubbery that's really tilted over that should be repositioned, I think. But I don't, I'm not a, I don't deal with that stuff. So I'm not sure how they, how they do that. So, uh, those are the questions I have with him. So, um, hopefully he gets somebody down here. Um, he, just to give you a, a quick query, um, we had the questions on the Route 111. On the issues related to the speed lane and how fast the speed is going and all those kinds of things. So I spoke to the sheriff's department. They're gonna do additional patrols to control speed. I also spoke to, um, the DOT who provided me their, um, I guess they have a, a, a public website, which I took some of the information that I provided on the sheet that I gave you, uh, specifically on, uh, Route 111 from New Road to, um, um, to Drew's Mills Road in that area and provided some crash detail for, for you from 2019 and 20 through 2021. And the, the things that I looked at were the, there, in 2021, there have been three incidents that occurred to date of reporting. Uh, of the three, three, two took place in front of Kate's Butter and one of them was involved personal injury. So, um, there have been, uh, a few accidents there, but not as many as I, um, that I would think there would be based on the concerns that will be reflected. But, uh, in 2021, there have been 56 crashes through the whole entire Route 111 within Arundel to date. As you can see, some of those are in that character, uh, that, uh, location that we thought they were, would be in. But, um, um, it appears that most of them have occurred in the month of June and most happen on a Tuesday around 1 o'clock. So go figure. Hi.
What's going on Tuesdays?
I don't know, but you, to me, I would have thought that, you know, it, it would be a weekday, I would think, but it would be closer to 5:00 than anything else, but. Yeah, or in the morning. So the crash, uh, deep, uh, detail is there. We've got folks involved in it. Um, we'll see how it flushes out and, uh, if we get any more concerns, um, obviously we can take a deeper dive into what's going on out there. I checked my emails. I think it was on Sunday night and saw on my emails to my office that, uh, said the afternoon, somebody thanked me for opening the reuse room again. Um, which I thought was totally surprising because it had not been opened. So this morning I responded to, uh, the individual indicated to them that it had not been opened. But talking to Roger today, I guess, uh, there was some material that had been placed in there, more clothing than anything else. I think people who were taking it upon themselves to reopen, uh, and I assured the individual who emailed me that it's not open yet. And I instructed, uh, Public Works to go ahead and make sure the material that's in there gets disposed of. Because I, from what Roger was explaining to me, we've never really taken clothing before and there was an abundance of clothing that had been deposited, so.
All that stuff can be brought down to Goodwill. They'll take all of that.
You know, if it's in good case, yeah.
Do we need to put signs there that says reuse room is not open or?
Yeah, yeah, I guess.
You were looking for some clothes, were you?
Well, um, so some reason, I guess, people thought, I, I don't know if you, if any of you experienced anything on Saturday.
I saw it open.
You saw it open?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
It was open?
Oh, yeah, it was open. Open. There was, there's a woman that's been kind of always there. I don't know what her name is. I haven't talked with her, but it was, it was, she was.
Okay. So she must have taken it upon herself to open it. So unbeknownst to us at the time, so.
Well, if it's padlocked, how did she open it?
Well, it, it generally isn't, but as Roger's, we can padlock it. We have to. So anyway, interesting, uh, interesting thing. But, um, the other thing I have is the, um, annual hazmat day that we generally have with, Kennybunk, Kennybunkport, Arundel, and the town of Wells gets involved. Uh, it's generally scheduled for October. I think it's scheduled for October 9th this year. I was reviewing the contract, um, and I noticed within the contract language that Clean Harbors had sent us, they, they were referring to any litigation would be, would be exercised through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Um, and so when I pointed that out to, um, the powers to be over in, in Kennybunk, they indicated to me and they conferred it with Clean Harbors that that language has been in there for the last several years. I, I never caught it or I would have mentioned it before. So I mentioned it to them. Um, the response I got was, um, yeah, it's, it's there, but it's been there for many years and we're not going to change it. So my, my question to you folks is, I, I asked them to supplement it, you, you regardless of put the state of Maine. I mean, thi- this hazardous material is coming from the state of Maine. The municipalities are within the state of Maine. I thought maybe the language should say that the laws of state of Maine would p- pertain to any legal action that would be occurring as a result of this a- activity. Doesn't seem I'm getting many, um, many, um, ability to be receptive on that. So what I'm asking you is it, do you want me to, I've reached out to our vendor, Casella, to see if they do any hazardous material. I'm very apprehensive about signing a contract that, um, says that any litigation has to be handled in the state of Massachus- Commonwealth of Massachusetts as opposed to Maine. So, um, am I wrong in this, guys?
Does it say that the, any litigation will be taken place in Massachusetts or that the laws of Massachusetts will simply apply?
It says.
Where does this material go? Does this material stay in state of Maine or they take it out of state?
The validity, interpretation, and performance of this agreement shall be governed and construed in accordance with the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts without regard to its conflict of laws, rules, and each party hereby submits to the exclusive jurisdiction of the state and federal courts of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for purposes of such proceedings related to any claim or dispute arising hereunder. So again, my, my issue is I feel very uncomfortable signing that on behalf of the citizens of Arundel and you folks.
My guess is the laws of Massachusetts are probably less stringent than the laws of Maine.
I don't know if that's true, but I don't want to go to Massachusetts if I've got to get involved in a fight.
So I've asked them to, uh, I, I've asked them to at least add an addendum to cover the state of Maine for any, uh, legal actions that may occur. Um, I haven't heard back. So I, I'm not signing it at this point. Um, and we may, you know, we may be going it alone or we may not have a hazmat day until that gets resolved somehow. So that's where I am with that.
Do we know how many people take advantage of that? Have we ever done a?
Um, I think there were, uh, 26 last year. Yeah, there, there isn't many. I think we could probably go a year or so and then have a, an abundance of people. But there's, I'm hoping there's other options that may be available to us and maybe Casella can assist us in achieving that goal. So that's where I am right now. I'll keep you all posted if something else changes. That's all I have.
Okay. The business then, we have a municipal release deed relative to lot 25A on map, on tax map one.
Yes, uh, this is the, um, this was the, the piece that, uh, the, the gentleman became, was deceased. And I initially brought it in indicating that, um, you know, the, the deed that I had, had written, as you pointed out, was inaccurate simply because the man wasn't, wasn't alive anymore. So what occurred here is I contacted, uh, People's Choice and so, and told them that I, I don't have any authority to, to sell it or to, to, to take your money and, and give a deed to you. What occurred then was that, uh, their, their attorney contacted me on several occasions. And at that point, I, you know, reached out to our attorney and had them both talk, provided both of them the complete, uh, uh, file for review and they both indicated that in 2016, when the mortgage holder was notified, we did not receive, return a green card that was not in the packet. I could not find it. Wasn't located there. So they felt that with, uh, with a series of interruption within the process, that there was an ability to, complete this municipal release deed to the estate of Kenneth King, uh, that would protect the mortgage company with its, uh, ability to, you know, at least have some sort of hold on the property. Um, and so they came up with this release deed. So that's why it's before you tonight to, to see if it's something that, uh, needs to be tweaked a little bit more or you feel it's okay.
This is what the town attorney suggested.
Town attorney and the attorney from, attorney for the bank, you know, for the credit union, yes.
So they're both okay with the grantee being the estate of Kenneth King?
Yes.
Okay. I would note however, uh, Jason's name is spelled wrong.
Can I pick up on that?
Oh, it is. Oh, yeah. Look at that. They put that A in there instead of the E, right?
A's okay, but E's a way.
Okay. Well, why don't we, why don't we hold off so I can clean that up? And then we'll have you, we'll have you sign it at the meeting.
So what happened is Peoples didn't get notice of the tax lien.
Well, that's, you know, every other record's there, but we can't locate that one nor can they locate it. So they're in a candidate, didn't get notice.
All right. So they, they've got the right, actually, 30 days they're gonna come forward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'll, uh, I'll redo that to make sure. I'm sorry I missed that. I could have corrected that before tonight. So.
Approval of payable and payroll.
Someone?
Second.
Any other business?
Yeah, a couple, a couple of items. Um, just an update, um, the new mics. Hopefully they should be on order, the new microphones.
Yes, I, I, he was gone. I, um, when I got your email, I reached out right out to him and said, you know, please move forward. He said he would. It looks like they won't be here until September, October sometime.
Yeah, September timeframe. So hopefully those will be, uh, much, much better. They'll work out pretty good. And then the other thing that I have is, uh, we heard anything more yet on the campground property? That was due.
Right. We're, we're moving forward.
You haven't heard anything back from him?
Uh, the only thing that Jim told me is that, uh, that the property owner moved two cars. And that was it. And then I noticed today that it looked like there was some furniture that's been pulled out of the building and laid out on the, on the front lawn. So we're, we're just proceeding. I know that Leah was on vacation this week. So, um, both Jim and I will get back to her and to, to keep moving forward with this, uh, process. But the, you know, the interesting thing here, and I don't know if I mentioned it to you before, is that the, the town did, um, did clean this property once before. We have an $80,000 lien on the property already. Just FYI to you folks.
I knew that we had cleaned it. I didn't know that we had a lien on it.
We threw her title search. She was able to determine that that lien's there, still outstanding.
Was that the delightful news?
Well, yeah, I, I, I didn't think it was delightful news either because I, I don't think we'll ever recoup all our costs associated with that piece of property. And unfortunately, we'll, we'll never get there.
I just want to mention one thing. Uh, Dan had mentioned earlier at the planning board meeting that this guy on Lower Lane was gonna present that road to the town for, take it over. Eventually that's his plan. Is there any way we can expedite the, the committee to look at impact fees for some of these future projects? Cause I mean, we're losing people on the public works side and gaining more roads. Is that something we could maybe pick the pace up on? Now, if it's too late in the running for this guy where he's already like pre-approved with the applications and stuff, but.
To, to try to develop a impact, impact fee process, yeah.
I mean, look at, look at his song when that, at some point in time, when that, if that development comes to the town. I mean, that's a huge development and boy, that's just gonna, I know Roger in his mind, he's thinking, man, that's just gonna add a.
I know they agree. Part of the approval process, they agreed to provide over a thousand, I think it's a thousand dollars every lot that they sell. And then when it was earmarked for, uh, recreation park improvement.
Or recreation, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So whether they had to do that or not, they, they, they did that. So.
No, that was part of, um, I was on the planning board when that came up. And, um, that was a discussion because of, initially we were looking at trying to see if they could put a ball field over there.
I see.
You know, or something, you know, and they said, well, we'll give you, we'll give you some money.
Okay. So, so what you're saying, Jason, is we should get going on the putting together in this.
I think so. Okay. And this guy's already made it apparent that that road, he wants the town to pick that road over. I would think that would be the opportunity. Before phase two gets started, maybe. I don't know if we're too late on phase one. I don't know how the impact fees work. If it's already approved through the planning board, can you go back and get that piece?
I don't think so. Probably not. I don't think so.
And, and he's got, it won't be until, so what he did, it's gonna be a year and then they top code it. So it'll be another year. So it's probably two years before he can come back to the town, um, and petition for, um, approval. But, you know, we get developments coming in, you know, as Lee J said, we're busy as heck. So to your point, maybe, you know, anything going forward, we need to look at that and see if really gonna, this is gonna couple watch us big time. I agree with you.
Well, just his songs.
Road volume's going up.
Yes.
We're going in one direction.
Just his songs development will take one truck. I mean, that would keep a person busy most of the day.
Yeah, you know, his songs property, you know, I, I go out there, walk around there a lot. When you're coming in from the. When you're coming in from the Old Alpha Road, you get to that first, it's not a cul-de-sac, but it's a circle. And boy, I'm telling you, as more and more people get in it, that's a dangerous, I can see somebody going strictly, you can't all of a sudden it just goes down into a hole. And to me, there should be some fencing there or something that should delineate that, hey, you know, you can't go straight here, but it, that's gonna be, that's gonna be real tricky right there at some point in time. I, I can just see an accident happening there. I mean, we can't do anything with that at this point now, but maybe we can ask his on to do something, but it's his road right now, but if it ever becomes our road and we need to put some sort of guardrail there, because I can see an accident happening there big time.
Well, ultimately that will be a decision made by the, the taxpayers and the townspeople because it'll be a warrant article.
Yeah, but I mean, they've never, at least as long as I've been on the board, we've never turned, turned the road down. I don't know if they've had in the past, but.
That may be, that may be a discussion that you're gonna want to have too. But not saying that we, you know, that you'll ever make that ultimate decision, but.
Yeah, I have no idea if his song plans on, on asking.
Yeah, I don't either.
I have no idea, but you know, and I know that he's there all the time and a winter time there. So it's gotta be a pretty good expense for him. So.
Sure.
Well, eventually it probably won't be him. Once, once he's down in there, I assume there'll be an association created and they'll take over.
Yeah, I, I don't remember what was all.
The association.
Yeah.
Regulations require that, as I recognize.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I know that he browsed it, at least I see his talks there, but I don't know if, you know, if he's getting paid by the association or not.
Refresh my memory. Well, how did we leave the impact fees? Were we going to establish a committee or what were you planning on doing? Was that our goal? I, I think it was.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it was. Jason's right. I think maybe that's, that's a process. It's not something, not something that happens overnight.
We've talked about this for many, many years.
Okay. Anything else, anybody?
Take motion to adjourn.
A second?
7:52.
7:52, is that right?
All in favor, we're out.